Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Lemer County Commissioner Jody Shadick McNally. I'm the current Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. We are here today for a work session with our Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Group, and we have several people in the room. We'll let the rest of the folks get introduced later, but right now I'm going to introduce my colleague to my left, Lemer County Commissioner John Kofalas, who resides in District One. And also with me at the table is my colleague, Lemer County Commissioner Kristen Stevens, who resides in District Two. We have our County Manager, Lorenza Volker. Also joining us across the table, I will introduce just a couple of folks and let them introduce the rest of people as we go forward with our sessions, is our Assistant County Manager Lori Kadrich, who also has the other hat of the Director of Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources. And then also we have our Community Development Director, Leslie Ellis. And with that, we have a packed agenda, so I will turn this over to you, Leslie, to get rolling. I know we have some really important topics to talk about today, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here today. It's January 30th, 2023.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Development Director. And I'm actually going to turn it over to my colleagues here very quickly, but I will start with the topic of short-term rental projects and where we are with the regulations and the proposed ordinance changes. And the purpose really today is to update you on where we are in the project, what we've been hearing from the community and the public, some of the events that we held last week and online, and then get feedback from you too about the next steps of the project. So the project managers for each of those components are Ton and Amy. Ton Hillenbrand here to my right and Amy White to my left, and they will walk you through what those drafts say and what we're hearing and then open it up for your feedback. So we're aiming to keep our piece relatively brief so that we have lots of time for conversation with you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ton Hillenbrand, Lemer County Planning Department. So as Leslie pointed out, this is our short-term rental regulations update for you all. So this covers the public review draft number two and the revised enforcement ordinance. So to give you just an updated quick process and schedule moving forward, so we currently are gathering community feedback on the public review draft number two and the amended ordinance for implementation and enforcement of short-term rentals. We currently have an online questionnaire that's associated with that draft, and that the public comment on that draft, or those drafts rather, are due today, January 30th. So the next step would be for the month of February, our intention is to summarize all of the input we have received thus far, so that includes feedback from the questionnaire, emails, and the open houses that we recently completed. And then come February 3rd, we hope to have the final public hearing drafts available. And then moving into a work session with the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners on February 8th. And then coming up in March, it is our intent then to go to public hearing with the revised short-term rental regulations. So that would be March 15th for Planning Commission and then hopefully March 27th for the Board of County Commissioners. And then early April, we would see the final draft and adoption of the amended ordinance of enforcement, and the reason that would come a little bit later is it often needs revisions based upon what is adopted in the draft regulations. So the public draft number two of short-term rental regulations and enforcement ordinance, the revisions reflected is based upon analysis and public input that we received on the initial public discussion draft, and that took place from October 27th to November 7th. And that included 180 written comments. We did have three different groups or organizations provide a comment, and then approximately 220 webinar attendees in November. So we gathered a lot of feedback from that initial draft. And a summary of those public comments can be found on our project webpage, and you likely receive those earlier. That date of November 7th is inaccurate. It went till the end of November. Sorry about that. And then the context and the reasoning for the proposed revisions were provided in a staff memo that is organized to follow the draft regulations and the changes that you see in the Redline versions, and that all of this information had been provided to you all as well as posted to the project webpage for the community to review as well. So just to go over quickly, some of the highlights of the revisions that were made as seen in the public review draft number two. For starters, at the beginning of the document, you will come across definitions. So in this draft, the significant feature to know is proposed maximum occupancies. So we covered this for short-term rentals, hosted short-term rentals, and the bed and breakfast ends. And then we are proposing removal of large short-term rentals, which are currently in our current standards, and that is more than 10 guests, and that is a county-wide proposal. And then in the previous draft document, we did have permit types, and one of which was a limited permit type, which limited the number of days per year a short-term rental could be rented. We did not bring that forward into this draft. In addition, there to the review procedures, countywide, including the Estes Valley, we did not change any of the zone districts that allow short-term rentals. However, some of the review procedures did change for certain zone districts. So for instance, in some, you may see we went from administrative special review to special review. So those kind of subtle changes. And then in this draft, we did propose a separation or a proposed minimum separation between approved short-term rentals, and we are proposing 500 feet, and that would be measured property line to property line. And then moving forward, floodplain overlay district standards that are currently floodplain overlay district standards in the current regulations, and there had been some slight modifications. So with this draft, the revisions of the floodplain standards, we did move forward with to not allow short-term rentals, including hosted short-term rentals, structures or primary access in the floodplain, including floodway and flood fringe. So we are currently working, staff team is in discussion about possibly looking closer at that and determining maybe a distance from a floodplain or floodway rather than outright. So we're trying to get more to the specifics, and we will continue to work with our engineering department to determine if there needs to be a distance separation. And then in the next round of drafts for the public hearing, we will also include revisions to associated standards. So for instance, floodplain overlay district standards aren't contained in Article Four of the Lemer County Land Use Code, so any of those revisions that need to be made will be seen or presented to you with the final public hearing drafts. And then we have local roadway and access standards in the previous draft as well as this draft. In this draft, we did propose simplifications to the standards for safe and adequate access, so you will see that those have been reduced. And then life safety inspection and license renewal. So this, the public review draft number two clarifies that a life safety inspection is required and recommends a required license renewal every other year, which is currently the practice. But with this proposal, we are proposing a building division reinspection every fourth year at the same time of the license renewal. And this was developed through conversations with our building department and the best practices. And then transferability. This is a big one, and it has gotten quite a bit of feedback and conversation. So revisions to the proposed language were made to align transferability standards with the town of Estes Park and to allow existing approved short-term rentals to continue to transfer their license. And the new approved short-term rentals, after the date certain, which would be time of adoption of the code, would not be able to transfer the license. And then the next two points just cover specifics for the Estes Valley, so non-conforming vacation homes in the Estes Valley. This draft incorporates a requirement requiring that the time of reinspection for a non-conforming vacation home be required to be in compliance with the Land Use Code safety standards in this specific section, which is 335B2 of the Land Use Code. And those safety standards cover things such as the operations manual, egress maps, fire extinguishers, so very specific to the Land Use Code for short-term rentals. And then residential zoning district cap for the Estes Valley. So this proposal, previous drafts did not propose a change to the cap. However, in this draft, we do mention consideration to reduce the cap in the residential zoning districts by 10% to 20%. And this was an alternative to eliminating short-term rentals from the residential zone districts, so we had heard some feedback from the public and EV PAC on that topic. So just one thing to note of an item that was not included in the draft regulations that has been getting a lot of feedback and discussion is exemption to the STR regulations in residential zoning districts for HOAs that support short-term rentals. So the public, the draft does not include changes to exempt certain neighborhoods after the staff team explored the legality and equitable ways to address requests from Windcliff Estates, which is located in the Estes Valley. The best option for those communities with HOAs that support or encourage STRs would be to request a rezone to an accommodation zoning district. And then a thing to note is that regardless of the zoning district, property owners would still be required to see county approval to meet all requirements for short-term rentals before operating. And we are continuing to explore potential options on this topic, so we continue to meet with this staff team and hope to come up with a solution. So the preliminary feedback to date, so a public engagement, like I said, we have been in the process. So the public review and comment began on January 13th with the public review draft number two and enforcement ordinance, and it continues through the end of the day today. We have to date received approximately 55 emails and approximately 78 questionnaire participants to date. And then we did complete two open houses just last week. So on January 25th, we had an open house in person in the Estes Valley, and we had approximately 70 participants that night. And then on January 26th, we had a county-wide webinar and again had approximately 70 participants. So preliminary feedback, it has been expressed that draft number two is improved from the previous draft, so that's really great to hear. There has been some continued concern regarding enforcement of the regulations and response time. And then Amy will likely touch upon that when she addresses the ordinance. And then we have had some support, the transferability revisions that we are proposing in this draft, but there has been some suggestion to establish a time limit to transfer for existing short-term rentals. So currently, the proposed language indicates that short, existing approved short-term rentals can transfer without a time limit, and any new short-term rentals coming in after the adoption of the regulations would not be transferable. So this would provide, or if we move forward with the suggestion, would limit or put in a timeframe. And then there has been some expressed concern regarding proposed, the proposed minimum separation requirement, just some about enforceability, others wanting to see possibly it be increased from 500 to maybe 1,000 feet or dependent on lot size, and then others propose concern that this won't work. And then there's been suggestion to approve our parking standards to ensure adequate off-street parking for all short-term rentals, and then development standards that address cigarette smoking and cigarette butt disposal. So those are, have actually been quite a few suggestions on that. So with that, I will turn it over to Amy White.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Amy White, co-compliance supervisor for Lemer County. You might remember that we adopted the first ordinance back in December of 2021, and just as the whole industry kind of develops and moves along, we're finding different things are of concern or whatever. So we decided to take another look based on some of the changes to the regulations and then put some of these into the ordinance itself. And first, what we'd like to do is clarify that the purpose is to create a license program rather than the planning approval versus the change of occupancy from the single-family residence. So once you do those two pieces, you will be given a license, and should the need arise, that license would be revoked, not necessarily the planning approval piece of that. We also put in some language about to clarify the county's indemnification. We clarified and strengthened the cease and desist process for illegal STRs for those folks that choose not to go through to get their planning approval or the license, but still want to advertise for the more than 30 days, which is allowed by law. We are requiring that they have, it must be rented for 30 days in the banner heading of their advertisement so that it's easier for the third-party vendor to track that. We're also requiring that the license number that will be provided to the existing short-term rentals and non-conforming vacation homes to have that license number in the banner heading as well. It's just easier for the third-party vendor to see it up there rather than to have to dig through all the verbiage on the amenities and all of that. So we're trying to get that up front and center. As Ton mentioned, we did reduce the property time, response time. We have had a lot of public comment about that that I'll touch on a little bit later. As Ton mentioned, the reinspection by the building division will also bring those non-conforming vacation homes into compliance with the Land Use Code safety standards. So it's not the life safety inspection, but it's the operations manual. And really what we've been experiencing is phone calls about fire pits because currently non-conforming vacation homes can still utilize their fire pits, and we're trying to alleviate that. So we're trying to bring everybody up operating on the same ground. A fee will be charged both for the building division reinspection and also for the planning division licensing piece of that. We tried to clarify some of the nuisance violations regarding disorderly conduct, wildlife violations, and make sure that people understand those are handled by different jurisdictions, not code compliance. But they will, once verified, count as a strike against your three strikes and you're out. So I've really been working on some coordination with some of these other jurisdictions to, again, just coordinate, and if they do get something, to notify us. And so we've been working on that behind the scenes. We have had some other people that are using RVs or tents or other whatever that bring those onto the property, and then they're extending that maximum occupancy. We also put in a provision that the property managers, once they receive a complaint, they need to notify us within 48 hours of what they did to mitigate that violation. And how that works is the third-party vendor automatically contacts me with an email that says, hey, we received a complaint, so I'm going to know when those complaints come in. And then also, we have found out that they will notify the property manager at the time they receive the complaint so that the property manager is aware that they have to respond within whatever time we actually get. So we've kind of beefed that up a little bit and strengthened that piece of it. We've added any language that egregious and/or severe life safety violations may be subject to immediate revocation, so that would be instances of a bonfire or whatever during a fire ban. And then we've also allowed fines up to $1,000 per violation per day for as long as the violation continues. Some of the feedback that we've been getting are that people feel that there needs to be quote-unquote "boots on the ground" 24/7 up there to respond to some of these complaints. There has been some suggestion that that be paid for by the private sector, and this can be explored, but in the end, that's probably going to be a policy decision that you all will have to make at some point. And then the response time, 30 minutes seems to really not make many people happy. So what we're thinking about doing is in the Estes Valley, similar to what the town does, they do it within the district of the Estes Valley Recreation and Park District boundary and/or the EP School District R3 boundary. I tried to pull both those up. I couldn't get the Recreation Park District to come up to see how that coincides with the school district, so we're still doing some work around that. And then, so that would be in the Estes Valley, and then take it back to an hour for the rest of the county. And with that, I think we're done with the presentation, so we'll open it up for questions.
Just for anybody who is watching online, we have provided the project webpage as well as the project email up on the screen. So thank you.
Okay, colleagues. Leslie and Lori, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think as they mentioned, we're open to questions, and then we would really appreciate any feedback that you have about the direction that this is going in as we move into the next draft for public hearings. If there are particular aspects that you think need to be looked at some more or changed or removed or anything along those lines, we would appreciate your feedback.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I have a list of questions, but we'll start with Commissioner Stevens and see what kind of questions she has.
Sure. So thank you for presenting today. I like where this is going because I feel like we're responding to feedback and really introducing that into this current draft. One of the questions I have, so transferability seems like it's a sticking point for a lot of folks. What, you know, in talking to a few other commissioners throughout the state, I don't think the transferability is, I mean, some communities don't allow it at all. So is that what you found when you were doing some research on this?
Yes, I'll jump in. Others can tag on, but we found that many of the communities do not allow these to be transferred, and then there are varying degrees of how they treat the existing legally-approved units in their communities. And that's, I think, where we've drawn that line too, is to say that the new ones wouldn't be allowed to be transferred. And in this past current draft, it states that the existing ones could be transferred. And, you know, and I think we've had varying degrees of feedback on that first part, too.
Sure. I mean, that seems like maybe the right balance to strike because, you know, yeah, so I'll just leave it there. With regard to the minimum separation requirement kind of language and 500 feet, where did we come up with that? Is that kind of a best, acknowledged best practice, or is that just? Okay.
That's correct. Again, looking at other jurisdictions, both in the county as well as outside of the county, we do see 500 seems to be a common number that or we, in some rare instances, 1,000 feet has also been used.
Could you help me visualize that? Because in the, I'm sorry for jumping in, but in the regulation, it says something from property line to property line, and I still can't visualize it. If you have a home that is licensed to be a short-term rental on a two-acre property and the property line is this far away, and then the neighbor wants to do a short, where does the 500 feet come in?
So, yeah, so it'd be measured from any given point of that property line out. So I guess it would probably create somewhat of a buffer of 500 feet around that home, and any interlapping parcel or lot would not be able or be allowed to get approval for a short-term rental. So trying to better visualize that. So in essence, if you had a two-acre lot and 500 feet from that lot line out, that immediate, likely that immediate lot or adjacent lot would likely not be able to have a short-term rental. However, depending upon the size of that adjacent lot, that 500 feet could maybe reach to maybe a second parcel or third parcel, just depending upon the lot size itself. So the bigger the lots, I think that would be a natural separation then, of course. So if you have larger lots, you may see more short-term rentals in that area, if that makes sense.
So if I, unless you have a clarifying question there, I just wanted to kind of back up here. I think, if I might, the intent of that is, we had a lot of feedback over the last few years and from a lot of folks, and especially the Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee, that density was an issue. And we've had, and I think this is the attempt at trying to address that overwhelmingly response from folks, that density in some of these neighborhoods who don't have the HOA permits that they thought they did, especially, I use that example, which I know is just one, but I know there's some others that they have, they feel like their whole street's full of them. The one neighbor, the older woman who had them literally on all sides of her, this would help kind of address that kind of situation. And so I think that, I know we've, we've had those conversations about how do you address density, because some people have a percentage, but that maybe not, but if it's a very large community, you could have one section that would have more than others. So I think this was your, probably the best practice that you've seen from others to address the density concerns. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Stevens, did you have more questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Kofalas, did you feel like your, before I proceed, did you feel like your question was adequately answered?
Thank you. And yes, that's helpful. It does raise another question, and I don't want to jump in because Kristen has more. In the regulation, it suggests regarding the cap in the Estes Valley, a 10% to 20% reduction, but then it also says that, that if there's a need for a reduction in how many short-term rentals there are in the valley in the residential, that that could be achieved if this 500-foot buffer is put in place. So it seems like both of those pieces are in there, and I'm afraid that confused me a little bit.
Hopefully I can provide some clarification. The idea is that with the separation, which as Commissioner Shadick McNally was mentioning, may address densities in certain neighborhoods and help put a distance and thin those out, if you will, over time. And then if you, in addition to that, if you were to consider reducing the cap, that that may be another tool in the same similar box that could then further reduce density moving into the future. So I think with those two together may have more of effect than maybe one independently. So that's just there for consideration if you wanted to take it to the next step or next level.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Lori, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest that in our future presentations that we do for the community and for the board, that we have some better illustrations of how that lot line and separation would be applied so that it's easier to visualize, because I do think it's difficult to understand what that would look like in a typical subdivision, and we can use our mapping tools and provide some more on the ground, if you will allow that language, examples of how that might be applied.
Thank you, Lori. Commissioner Stevens, I know you had more questions.
Just a couple. So with the idea of HOAs that support short-term rentals, and the idea was that maybe we wouldn't make an exception in the code and that we would look, those places could rezone, what would be involved? I mean, is that, how hard would that be? And would a specific neighborhood be able to pull themselves out of zoning and be able to do that?
So I'll explain that one a bit. So a neighborhood could opt request to rezone to an existing zoning district, one of the accommodation zoning districts, or if they don't find that those zoning districts are suitable or fit their future goals or aspirations, they could request to create a zone district, like a planned development zone district, that would include the types of uses that they would like to have in their neighborhood and exclude the types that they would not want to have in their neighborhood. And then they would come to the county and request that rezone, and it could be considered as a legislative rezone. It would involve notification to all the property owners in the neighborhood and an opportunity for all of them to comment and be involved in that discussion and decision. Ultimately, it would be a commissioner decision as to whether to move in the direction of a rezoning. So it would go through the standard public hearing process, public notification, public, you know, all of the public information that would happen as part of that. So there is some work that would have to be done. It is a bit involved, but that would be the cleanest way to proceed forward for a neighborhood like Windcliff that has unique circumstances and historic uses of short-term rentals, as opposed to writing in the regulations just an exclusion for that type of situation.
So there wouldn't be any kind of vote, but it would be sort of, they could present, I mean, they would have a hearing and people could-
Correct.
-or present a petition if they circulated one or something like that, and we could decide from there if we wanted to do that. Okay.
And there's no requirement that 100% of the property owners are in agreement with that. Certainly, everybody would have an opportunity to voice their opinions and preferences, but it's a legislative rezone, and so we would have to follow all the procedures for notification and whatnot. But ultimately, you know, if you held a public hearing and you had, you know, a lot of support, but maybe a few voices dissenting, you could still opt to move forward in that direction if you feel like it's merited.
Thank you for explaining that process. So I'm largely supportive of the changes we've made. I think that draft two is an improvement, and I like that we've identified some areas where we've been able to incorporate public comment into this draft. So I, with the limited comment that you've had on draft number two, I do agree that addressing smoking and butt disposal would be a great idea, especially because a lot of the concerns that we've expressed when we've been approving or disproving some of these rentals has been around, you know, concerns around fire. I mean, you know, I think that that's a big concern in the community. It's a big concern amongst us, and so I think that having something that addresses smoking and butt disposal would be great. But otherwise, you know, I'm comfortable in the direction that we're going. You know, obviously, we'll hear, you know, we have public comment coming in through the rest of the day, and then there'll be some synthesis of that public comment to see if we've missed anything. But I appreciate this update and- But I appreciate this update, and I know this is a ton of work. So thanks, Ton and Leslie, and Lori, and Amy and team for all the work that you've done to get us here. And, you know, hopefully, we will, I mean, I'm sure we will have a robust public discussion as we look to adopt anything in the future. But appreciate the updates and appreciate learning to see what the community has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. And just real quick, before I move over to Commissioner Kofalas, time check, how much more time, how much time do you do plan for us to have this today? And because I see other people in the room that I'm, I'm assuming they're all here for this, or I just want to make sure.
We are.
Okay. So do we have, what else, how much time do you need on the other items on the agenda? Just want to, just make sure, I'm watching for time.
For the director update for myself, I don't need really any time at all.
Same.
Okay. So maybe five, 10 minutes? Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I'm managing the time correctly. Commissioner Kofalas, did you have questions or comments?
Just want to, well, I guess in terms of direction, I would agree that we're moving in a, in a good direction, but I frankly think there's more we can do to find common ground. So I'm not ready to say that this is, you know, especially since we have until the close of business or midnight tonight to get additional comments. And also, I think the, the coming period that we were referencing in your slide, I believe, if I remember right, we extended it to December 14th. So we did try to be responsive to folks and give people more time, and then that helped us inform the public draft number two, which I did, which I did read, and which was very helpful. Going back to the, the rezoning and the Wind Cliff, two things related to that, and then I'll pause. I have lots of questions, but they're not going to get addressed today, so we're going to have to figure that out. But first of all, given that, Leslie, you just said that would be the cleanest way to address the concerns of that particular HOA, where historically, this is what they have set their neighborhood up to be, there still seems to be resistance or pushback to being rezoned as an accommodation zone, zone district. I'm wondering why that is. Is it a perception thing? Is it that they, they have stated they have to get 100%? You've just stated you don't need 100%. So why is there still resistance to going down the path of the cleanest approach that ultimately, I think, would address their concerns about allowing them to, you know, to do short-term rentals in their neighborhood? And then related to that, an easier question perhaps is, how many neighborhoods are similar, if they're like the HOA at Wind Cliff? Is it just, is it just Wind Cliff?
I can jump in to start. So Wind Cliff is the one that we've heard from the most. We have not heard from other neighborhoods that this is a concern or interest to them. I, the, some of the reasons that I've heard, and there may be others, but one is a concern about rezoning to accommodations could allow for some commercial uses that they're not in favor of. And so that's been a concern. I think you mentioned the 100%, you know, participation levels from their residence, that's been a concern. I think I've heard some concerns about taxation potentially, and whether it results in commercial taxation or other things. So those kinds of things have been cited, plus it takes some work and some effort, and it's not a certain, you know, it's not a certain outcome. So I think those are the things that we've heard. And, and I think we can probably address some of those concerns, but maybe not all the concerns that we've heard.
Thank you. Quick follow-up. I guess I want to put on the record that I think we need to, we need to resolve that issue somehow. So I think that, to me, that's really important, that we resolve that issue in the way that makes most sense. And then if, I'll just ask one more question. It's kind of an overarching question. It gets back to what I've asked in the past, and why, you know, why we've gone down this road. And it seems like in our general review criteria, one through five and 6.3.1 DE, or one of those, trying to impress our county attorney here, you know, when we got a short-term rental application, it's because the first two criteria, neighborhood compatibility, and also impact, or it might affect, you know, future development and all that. And then the second one, there's always question about those two. And so my question, Leslie and team, is, I thought that this process was going to help us come up with very, much more objective criteria that would help us not, would help the process not be subject to as much interpretation as it sometimes has been in the past. Can you speak to that, Ms. Ellis?
Certainly.
Oh.
So it does include more objective criteria, so all of the new additions in the Article Three, Section 3.35 are more objective criteria. The setback requirements, the standards around floodplains, the road access standards and whatnots, those all are things that reflect a lot of what you've heard in your hearings when you've ultimately decided that, you know, a short, a particular short-term rental may not be compatible in that neighborhood. And so I think with these additions of these more specific technical standards in that section, you would have more to lean on. Well, first of all, there may be short-term rentals that never come to a hearing in the first place because they wouldn't be able to meet those criteria. Or there are going to be more concrete measurable standards that will help you in making those decisions ultimately, if there's, you know, some concern about one of those topics. So I think that these standards, at least in this draft, do go in that direction of making the criteria more objective, and hopefully making the decisions for everybody a bit easier, and making it more predictable for applicants, too, so they know what to expect when they're walking into this process.
Okay. Commissioner Kofalas, now you said you had more questions, did you want to just, I have a few, but I wanted to make sure you have, had any other burning questions you wanted to ask.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I think I'll switch to listening mode for a little bit, and see where this takes us.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Kofalas. And I appreciate all of us being in listening mode today. And first, so I'm going to try to be brief, but since I've been getting a lot of feedback since a lot of these areas in my district, first and foremost, I just know, a lot of people think, how did we get here? Well, we had a lot of things with our hearings, and we wanted to kind of clarify this. And this is something that has increased in impact and intensity over the last few years, that we've heard from a lot of folks that this, they felt it was impacting the quality of their neighborhoods, their quality of life, and the noise and glare and the wildlife. And this has been something that I've heard a lot from folks, but I think that currently, since the process has gone on, we have a lot of folks that feel a little more uncomfortable voicing their concerns sometimes because of the controversial issue in the small area of Estes Park. And I've heard from all kinds of folks around the county about this. And I hear a lot from folks who call me that are afraid to speak up because they don't want to have someone approach them in the grocery store with a comment. So just wanted to share that first. And secondly, I'd like to address something I read in the paper today. It sounds like you had a paper come up and attend this last week, or two papers, it sounds like, that process. So I wanted, a comment caught my eye, that this was unusual format. But this is, I wanted to, a couple of questions. This is no different than the webinar or the community forum you did in Estes last year. This is a common practice we use with our oil and gas rigs and our other community forum process, and kind of a standard best practice used by our planning department, where we try to have a lot of the community engagement and feedback. So this is no different or something unusual for Laramo County or other counties. Am I correct? This is, this thing that happened last week was not unusual, is kind of our standard practice and a best practice? Am I correct about that? I'd just like to address that, that comment that was made in the public.
Oh, sure. Yes, the open house format that we held is pretty typical for a lot of projects that we've done. It's a good opportunity for staff to engage with the public and hear direct feedback, and let people, you know, go at their own pace and provide comments either in writing or verbally, and, you know, share, share information and hear their ideas back. So I would say we've done it for, as you mentioned, you know, many other projects, including probably our comprehensive plan and, and other things that we've done, including the Estes Valley Comprehensive Plan, so, yes.
Cool. Thank you. I just wanted to publicly state that, because I found that very unusual, since we are kind of following a best practice, I thought, so. My next comment is, I know it was meant, kind of mentioned, but I'm wondering if we could look at taking it a step further. You talk about having referral agency, having that impact zone around our reservoirs or public parks, or even around Rocky National Park. I kind of heard loud and clear from those individuals and agencies that there is concern about the impacts on our parks and public spaces in Rocky National Park because of short-term rentals that are right next to or near these places. First off, a lot of folks tend to enter the parks maybe illegally, or not, by paying the fine, or not following trails and creating extra social trails and causing erosion and issues inside the borders of these. Also, it seems that some of the short-term rental owners, wondering if the park rangers or maybe the sheriffs just going to be able to, down the road, be kind of there immediately for responses. And I don't know if our public agencies, our pertinent natural resources, or even the Rocky National Park, as I understand, is have the resources to be responding to short-term rental complaints or issues. So that's a concern of mine. So I would like to see that maybe we have in our regulations, maybe that 1,000-foot, that short-term rentals can't be within 1,000 feet of the, of a public, our Laramo County public space, a reservoir, or even around the Rocky National Park. And I do know these happen, because people said, oh, we're renting this cabin, you should come up and hike with us. And I say, well, where are you hiking? And they say, oh, we're just going out the back door. And I know that's causing these social trails and causing some issues for some of the land management concerns that we're currently hearing from our public land managers. So I kind of wanted to look at adding that. The concerns about maybe backing down or changing how we're dressing with the floodplain and zone, I kind of like to stay firm with that. I see that, especially in Glen Haven and some of those areas in the floodplain, or some of these canyons and stuff, or even, I think, back to the tragedy we had last year, where that, that flash flood came so quickly for that mom and daughter. I'm just worried about folks who, and I go back to, it's kind of the 1976 flood, where people shared stories of people got in their cars and went the wrong way, and they were visiting, and they didn't know where to go or how to get out. I really think that some of these in the floodway and floodplains are having that access. It might be, the house might not be there, but the driver, where the car's parked is there. And if they get in their car and get swept away, I still have that concern. And I think that maybe they just don't, you can do all the education in the manual, but it, when it comes down to panic time, I just still have concerns about that. So I'm still kind of wondering about that. The, and I think this draft, too, has found a lot more common ground. I think that we have listened to folks. I still think there's some pushing back, because I, it's mostly from the short-term rental owners who would like to have maybe even less regulations than we had currently. So the transferability piece, I'm glad that Commissioner Stevens brought up. I heard from some folks thought maybe, maybe that was inequitable, have some that were going to be in perpetuity, having a license. And I was talking, as Commissioner Stevens mentioned, she, we talked to other colleagues around the state, and, and they were pretty firm on no transferability. So I was wondering if we looked at the current ones that have them already, if we look at one-time transfer, like maybe in the next five to 10 years, that they could be able to transfer this to one, this license one time? So maybe that would take care of that issue that gives a lot of people a lot of years or, or ideas to, whether or not this is something they might want to transfer, just to make eventually kind of a cross-the-board equal or fair for everyone that has that. And then the 30 minutes to respond, when you're within the certain Estes Valley, I know when it gets very busy up there, it's hard to get across the valley, but at the same time, we want a very prompt response. So I'm not sure where that is, but I thought 30 minutes in that area, actually went up and drove from end to end a couple of times over the last week. And I was able to do that, even kind of going through the downtown. So I'm not sure what that answer is, but I think the whole intent is for to have a quick response. And so I'm not sure what that looks like. So I, so I'm not, if we're going to do the boundary, I still think it has to be within an hour, like we hold everyone else to. Because if you can't respond in that quickly, and then, and then the issue goes on, it's kind of a concern. So, let's see, I have a lot of other questions, too. But one question I have about the three strikes you're out. I'm wondering if we should look at two strikes. We've heard so much from all the, even the short-term rental owners, that they think we don't do any enforcement, which we know is not true. I know your office does a lot of enforcement, and it's sometimes a long process. So I have two questions. Should we look at two strikes? Because if they're going to do it once, and they've been warned, and it happens again, should it be two strikes in two years? So that, you know, we can kind of make this something that we're able to deal with swiftly and quickly? If they're concerned about enforcement and want stricter enforcement, I'm sure they'll won't mind having that, that a little bit tighter. But the second thing I have, is, I had a lot of questions over the weekend. They all, they want us to pay for an enforcement officer, 27, but it would have to be at least three or four people full-time, and that's a big expense. And I was kind of estimating that, and divided by 300, and how much that would be for yearly fee, not one time, but a yearly fee on every short-term rental. And I was wondering, they were thinking that, and poll enforcement officers can write tickets. And we can't by law right now write tickets, but explain to me, and I'm saying this mostly for the public, because I know this answer, but I'm saying this for the public that are listening in. We can't write tickets, but explain to me how these fines would be assessed, and how, how that would work, and how we can, how we can enforce that and bring, collect those? Because it seems like this, right now, our process takes a long time to even get the ones that are illegally running, where cease and desist and going to court takes time. But can we explain how this $1,000 would be, and maybe going to two strikes? And do we need to seek a legislative response, so we can write tickets? And what's, what's the enforcement? Since we've heard a lot from enforcement, and I had people calling me the last week asking us to, to pay for enforcement officers, so.
The ordinance purpose is to give you an opportunity to revoke the license and to penalize people. That's separate from the land use code. The land use code is intended to regulate, you know, how far back is it, how many fire extinguishers do they have to have? This, the legislature already empowered counties to specifically regulate short-term rentals. An ordinance is different than the normal land use powers you have, because it gives you the power to issue fines, but it has to be specifically called out. And the legislature specifically called out, short-term rentals is something that you could regulate through ordinance, like you do rubbish, or dogs, or, or dirty houses, or whatever. So you have that power. You can, the way we have it written now, essentially, there's sort of a spectrum of considerations that the director would consider with regard to how significant of a fine to impose. You don't have to do it that way. Similar, some other jurisdictions do it, where they say your first offense is $250, your second offense is $500, your third offense is $1,000. So you could do it that way also. It's more rigid, it gives you less flexibility, but it's a little bit more, you know, it's determined what they're going to get. In terms of, you know, how do we increase or speed it up? I mean, the fines will be faster, but you still have to provide notice. It's like anything else, when you give somebody a penalty, the government gives somebody a penalty, they have to say, here's your formal notice, here's what you violated. You have an opportunity to respond to that. That's basic due process that you have to provide to people. And say, here's what you're accused of, here's what the potential penalty is going to be, and you have an opportunity to then dispute it somehow. It's, you have to provide that to people. So the fines will be faster. You can impose those fines, and then we would still have the opportunity to seek an injunction or to try to get a court order to prohibit them from doing that. But ordinances are intended to kind of give you more of that police power to regulate these things.
Thank you. And a lot of those questions I'm asking for, mostly for the public to hear this. I knew those answers, but I wanted the public to hear that, since I had a lot of questions over the weekend. So the other, one other thing I wanted to ask real quick, and I know I want to honor the time, and see if my colleagues have any other questions, or I have a lot of lists, and I appreciate, well, first, I want to just thank you all. This, I would say this process and the amount of effort is beyond anything I've seen you all do since I became commissioner. And I want to just thank you for the public engagement and fielding a lot of questions and things. So I actually have two more questions still. First, I did talk to some law enforcement, and they, some people were complaining about signs. When they get called to a, a short-term rental for disturbance, they don't know whether it's a short-term rental or not. So if they go and they just assume that people are in the house or in the house, having that sign on the front of the short-term rental would allow them at least to know who to property manager, that just kind of lets them know there's this kind of a different situation. Is that one of the other, it sounds like the law enforcement would appreciate having those kinds of signs, so they could distinguish, so, you know, it gives them one quick step to understand what they're coming up on.
So to answer that, Commissioner
So, to answer that, Commissioner Shadak McNally, we're also working quite extensively with the IT department to have an interactive map similar to the one that Mr. Lafferty has for the oil and gas, so that you could click on that dot and find out who the property manager is, whether it was a non-conforming vacation home at one point. So, we're working very diligently with IT to get that up and running as soon as possible.
Great. So, that'd be like another tool to the signage as well, but the signage might, yeah.
Yeah. And I think people sometimes think signage is like the real estate sign, you know, out in the middle of, and I know there's two different ways to look at this, but it would be on the outside, so that it's not really a freestanding side, right? It's on the structure itself.
I appreciate that. Bless you. And my last question, just because of time, is, and then mostly I'm doing this for the public to listen in, because we've had a lot of feedback that this is an economic detriment to the community. So, I know that staff, and one of the things, Tashi Hines, who helped out a lot on this, is a response to a white paper that was sent to us by a group of short-term rental owners, that this was going to be economically detrimental. Your analysis that you sent right before Christmas stated maybe a different effect than what was stated. So, I was wondering if you could just briefly, you know, that one paragraph, it talks about the percentage, even if there was a reduction in the cap, if you wouldn't mind just, I think it's just basically that one paragraph, and there was very, said that very well, if you wouldn't mind just for us to hear that again and for the public.
Do you have another question that you can ask? While I try to find that section.
Yeah, I will. I guess just that, should we thought about two strikes versus three strikes is something I thought, because three strikes could take, it just would be, well, we know this is probably going to happen again. I just, I'm just wondering if two strikes is pretty much time to think about that. And then, I guess while you're looking it up, just then I'll think of another question. How easy, is this going to be easier to revoke licenses than we currently have?
I think it will be easier, yes. It'll give a little bit more structure to how that's going to play out.
Would it take less staff time and make the process kinder, friendly to staff?
Maybe slightly. I mean, it's just difficult, because the same components exist. You still have to have an allegation. You still have to be able to prove that allegation. You still have to have staff follow up on it. It will help make it more defined, but I don't know it's going to save massive amounts of time. I don't know that there's a way to save it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Leslie.
Okay. Hopefully, this is what you had in mind, but I am referencing the white paper that we put together on December 22nd, where we looked at the various analysis that had come our way from the Estes Valley, including the, Investra had provided some information, and that was based on some of the Visit Estes Park analysis. And our findings were that, you know, we found a lot of the information that was in that Visit Estes Park report to be plausible and consistent with our numbers and our analysis. But we found that the, some of the claims that eliminating short-term rentals in residential areas or reducing potential reductions to the number of short-term rentals would not be quite as large as estimated in those papers. And specifically, we, and this was some, based on the analysis with our sales tax office, if short-term rental units in county residential areas decreased by 5% or 13 units, the dedicated amount for childcare and workforce housing would be reduced by $36,000, or approximately 1.5% of the $2.3 million, basically, that would be raised from that tax. Or if it was, if units were decreased by 20%, 53 units, the dedicated amount would be reduced by $144,246, or approximately 6%. So, I think the basic finding there is that we, you know, we did this fairly limited analysis just on the lodging tax, not on sales tax, not on other factors. But at least based on that analysis, we found that the impacts would be more limited than what we had seen stated. And it also didn't account for potentially increases of short-term rentals in other districts or, you know, other market factors that might, you know, cause, you know, prices to go up or other changes in the valley overall. So, you know, we, you know, we see the value of these from an economic standpoint, and certainly, it's important to consider that. But we don't see that the impacts are maybe quite as large as what's been stated in some of the other forms.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. I appreciate that very much. So, colleagues, any other questions? If not, I'll have them do their, great. Commissioner Kofalos.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that I still need, I think there's room for finding more common ground. I think we started this process last year, and a lot of credit goes to the staff, Ton and Amy, and engineering folks and others, our code compliance folks, so that you deserve an awful lot of credit. But I think we were hearing valid concerns from people about the interface of, you know, the rise in short-term rentals, and especially where they're located, a lot in the mountainous areas, and concerns around public safety and wildfire hazards. And all of that is very valid. I just want to make sure that we are addressing those concerns about impact on environment, wildlife, concerns about natural disasters, fires, but striking a balance with, I still believe that this idea of property rights and how do you strike that proper balance? And I had questions on the enforcement piece, but I think I'm going to require a special tutoring session if we can find the time for that.
Okay. Thank you all. And I think that's maybe one more thing I wanted to ask, is if they are, the short-term rentals are in a very, very, very high-risk wildfire zone, and the fire districts each had a different process, do we want to normalize that process? And should an extra step for homes that are in these very high-risk areas that don't have access to water or fire hydrant nearby, if there needs to be an extra criteria for some of those who don't have, if there's a certain, like, it's a certain response time over 30 minutes, and there's no fire hydrant? I'm just, I hadn't seen some of that brought into thought, just because we did have some of those in the last two years, where there was no fire hydrant, and the residents were very concerned about that, and the response time, and the road incline, you know, getting the fire departments up there quickly. So, I didn't know if we, I didn't really see much of that. And so, I didn't know if there need to be, like, if they met this criteria of being in the zone, and there's no fire hydrant, and their response time's over 30 minutes or something, maybe there need to be an extra referral agency scrutiny or an extra criteria? I didn't know if we had thought about that. So, anyway, all right. So, now we're, just to kind of let you guys wrap up. Thank you.
I'll just say a few words, and then Ton, if you have any closing comments too. But I think, as Ton mentioned, our next step is to hear the feedback through today, including this, and then do another turn, and then continue the work sessions and opportunities for public comment through the public hearings. So, I think we did not hear completely consistent feedback from all three of you, so we may have to continue the discussion on some of these topics and see what others think about some of these topics and keep working on it. But we will do some research on a few of those things and come back to you with a bit more information to see if we can satisfy all that we heard today and that we keep hearing through the public too. So, do you, Amy or Ton, have anything else that you'd like to add? Or Frank?
No. I think the only thing I would add is, just as a reminder, is I will be summarizing the public comment that we have received, so both from our open houses, the email comments and our questionnaire, much like what we've done in the past. And then, once those are available, they'll be posted to the project webpage. In addition to that, I will also post, especially for like the webinar, the recording of the webinar, as well as likely PowerPoint, or, so that information will be out there for everyone.
And then, just a reminder that the next draft of the ordinance is still a second draft, and we won't have that final draft until we catch up with the regulations, but there's that lag time there.
Thank you for the input. And if you would like time to sit down and, you know, dig into any of these topics in more depth, we are more than willing to do that too. So, but thank you for all of this today. It's very helpful.
So, did we have any updates you want to, I know we're going to go a little over, but if you'd like to give a couple of brief updates, since we still have a couple of agenda items.
The only update that I have is that we have come to the place where we have a panel of candidates for the Community Planning Infrastructure Resource Director position. And so, we'll be following up on that process yet this week. We have four candidates, and they'll be going through their process on Thursday and Friday. And so, hopefully, that'll be a successful recruitment process, and then we'll have more to come, and I can take off a hat.
Thank you, Lori. I know you've been wearing two hats very well for a while now, so. Director Ossie, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I don't. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you all for your work. Thank you all for being here. And I know this, and Ton, especially, big kudos to you for, you've been really bringing these all together and putting these presentations. So, big, big kudos and commend you for the job well done, and appreciate, and Amy too. I know you've been really working on this ordinance, and thank you, Frank and Leslie. So, I want to make sure we recognize the immense amount of work that staff have been putting in, more than I, I mean, all these things I've seen you guys work on, but this has been an immense amount of work. So, I want to thank you. So, with that, we are just one minute over. I want to thank you all for joining us today. And at 2:31, we are adjourned.